It's now six o'clock. I'm gonna call the Bullock County Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. I want to welcome everybody here tonight, and some of you might leave early, so I want to wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Ryan Brandon to lead us in an invocation and to say the pledge, and if you have your cellphone on, please silence that.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for allowing us to gather this evening. We thank you for all the blessings that you've given us today, each and every day of our lives. We pray, Lord, now that this evening you would allow us to have wisdom in the decisions that we make, and, Lord, that all that we do would be for your glory, that we would humbly approach all of our tasks that we have, including this one, wishing to glorify you. We pray that you'll guide us now and bless everyone in this room. And, Lord, this time of year, we thank you for the blessing of your son, Jesus.
Amen.
And, Lord, we pray that all these things in his precious name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our first order of business will be to, is there any additions or corrections in the minutes for November the 14th? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Lane.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bass. All those in favor? That's unanimous, so we'll move to item one. R&amp;H Holdings has submitted an application requesting a variance to the zoning condition number six of the zoning decision dated July 1st, 2014, which states that subdivision shall have two entrances along Youngblood Road. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As stated by the request, this variance deals with a condition that was placed on the property at the time it was rezoned back in 2014, I believe by a different previous landowner. This is the general location of the property, just to the east of Statesboro, which is along Youngblood Road. Here's the current zoning map for the property, in which, I believe it was two months ago, this board heard a sketch plan approval request, in which it was determined that this variance would be required for that sketch plan approval to move forward. But those zoning conditions are included, at least in the staff report for the second agenda item tonight. If, you know, as you're going through it, that's where the, we presented the conditions. But an aerial of the property is shown here. This larger tract here, and then it matches over with what was being proposed for sketch plan approval, which shows one entrance. And the staff condition addresses, really, the public safety concern of why we'd have two entrances, and this gets the entrance aligned to the subdivision across Youngblood Road. And so with that, staff recommends approval with the condition included in the staff report.
Mr. Bass, are you connected?
Yes, sir. Good evening. I'm Robbie Bell. I'm here for R&amp;H Land Holdings. Jim Anderson couldn't make it tonight. The purpose of this request, of course, is to allow for the one entrance as opposed to two, and that was a specific condition put on this property back in 2014, when the prior owner had it rezoned. If I'm not mistaken, they were trying to get substantially more lots at the time than what we're proposing now. You see, we've got 72 acres in an R-25 zone. If you, if you didn't know what this property was, and you said, "We got 72 acres in an R-25," you would think we're coming in here with over 100 lots. But this particular tract does have a fair amount of wetlands. And, you know, I guess a lot of things have happened since 2014. We have delineated wetlands. We have had a traffic study done, which we have, staff has a copy of. And in addition to that, you have changes to federal, state, and local laws. Specifically, you've got regulations in the zoning ordinance that was amended back in 2023 that make changes to entrances and the amount of distance that you have between them. If you look on this picture, one thing you don't see is that we have aligned this entrance with the subdivision, the Hamilton Landing, across the street. So on a day-to-day basis, it is much safer to have one entrance as opposed to having two on one side, one on the other, where they're all jagged for traffic concerns. Staff has recommended approval, and we would ask that you approve it. And I'm here to answer any questions or address any concerns you may have.
We do have one person signed up to speak, and Lawton Sack. You'll have 10 minutes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. My first issue, and I've signed up to speak on all four of the issues to come up tonight, is that the application for this variance was not included in the planning and zoning agenda packet that was made available to the public. So I want to ask the question, did any of the applicants make any contributions to the county commissioners? It's a question to ask on the application. It was, again, was not included with this. While James looks at it, we've gotten kind of in a habit, and I know y'all, planning and zoning, have seen this, of bait and switches happening for a while here in Bullock County, where something is approved, and then they come back and ask for a variance to be done. And this is not a tackle, Mr. Robbie Bell. I personally like him. But he knew, when he was designing this and building this, what the county had approved of two entrances. And speaking with the public safety and the fire, with Joe Carter, he said it's very important for these subdivisions to have two entrances in here. And there's been a lot of talking about the importance of public safety here in Bullock County. And it needs to, it needs to be done, where the public safety officials have a say-so on these subdivisions before they come up, before the planning and zoning. And I think it would be wise for the planning and zoning, if you're not going to turn this down, to table this until you can speak with people like Joe Carter and get his opinion on the safety. Did you?
Just in a different folder.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I just, I have a question, James, that says that Joe Carter participated in the review. So, I mean, I'm assuming he had input on this?
Yeah, Joe Carter is a part of the staff that meets to develop the staff report, which primarily the one recommendation for condition of approval came from the Fire Department. So there's about six or seven fire code, really, ways to go about alleviating a strict interpretation of two entryways into a subdivision. And so this condition really employs one of those that's made available by the state. So that's...
Point is, he has had input.
I mean, well, yeah, the public obviously doesn't know that, other than know he's part of a meeting, because all we get is, you know, whether the staff recommends or not.
Right, I understand.
But it's pretty obvious that Mr. Carter had some concerns that he addressed in that meeting.
Yeah. So, yeah, I just was pointing that out, that there wouldn't be any reason to defer it for that reason, because he's already, he's already had input into it.
Got time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, any questions from this board?
Could I respond, sir?
Hmm?
Could I respond?
Yeah.
This was not a bait and switch. This is not a property that I rezoned. This property was rezoned over 10 years ago from the prior owner. And we're talking about, we've actually got this divided as, done as a divided entrance. It's not exactly depicted correctly on here, but with a divided entrance, you have two single lanes, and then there's a divider between them. And those lanes are generally oversized lanes. So it's with a typical road that would be maybe 20-foot wide, so essentially 10 feet in each lane. When you do a divided entrance like this, the lanes are wider, so they can, the purpose is, it's kind of like when you've seen them evacuate the lower part of the state, and they reverse traffic on I-16. It's the same purpose, so that you have two ways in. You know, it's divided, and in theory, a tree falls, well, the tree's got to be pretty tall to block this lane, block the entire median, and block the other lane, as opposed to just having that 20-foot road right there.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from this board? Okay. Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Ms. Shalonda.
With the condition, conditions.
Okay.
With conditions.
With, motion to approve by, with conditions, by Ms. Shalonda. Mr. Lane seconds it. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, item number two. R&amp;H Holdings, Land Holdings LLC has submitted an application for a sketch plan to divide 72 acres into 58 lots. The property is located on Youngblood Road. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As this property deals with the same property as the previous agenda item, I won't go through the location and all that, but this is the sketch plan that was provided by the applicant. Again, I believe this board saw this two months prior, in which it was deferred out of last month, so that we could catch up with the variance. With the variance approval, that was just granted, the sketch plan does meet what is required of subdivision ordinance at this time, and that divided, or the entryway would be a little, little bit larger in width to the intersection, the first intersection into the, into the subdivision, but which that would be for the staff to, you know, determine at preliminary platting stage, or as the plans were drawn up, that it follows that condition. But with that, staff recommends approval of the sketch plan.
Okay. Ms. Capell?
I don't really have anything more to add. I think James has said it enough. I'm here to answer any questions, or do you have any?
Okay. Any question? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Lawton Sack signed up to speak.
I just have the same question again about the application.
Okay.
Well...
Have you made any donations?
Again, that folder, I think, is in a previous month's folder. But with this being a sketch plan, there's, there's not a public hearing associated with it, so.
Okay. Any questions from this board?
Is there a landscape buffer between this neighborhood and the adjacent neighborhood?
If I'm not mistaken, well, talking about the tract to the left that D.R. Horton has, I believe a good bit of that is already wooded. And we're proposing, I think we have a condition to put a landscape buffer along Youngblood Road, but again, there's already a hedgerow, and it's already wooded there, so we'll kind of work with staff on that. I don't know that it makes sense to tear down and put right back, but we'll work that. There will be some landscaping in place and some type of buffer.
Okay. Any other questions? Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Reiner.
Second.
Second by Ms. Delane. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Moving on to item three. R&amp;R 520 LLC has applied for a variance to Appendix C, Article 14, Supplemental Standards for Specific Uses, Section 1438(c). Access shall only be from arterial or collector roads. The property is located owner near 16287, Highway 67. Mr. Steve Rushing is agent. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This case was heard in last month's planning and zoning meeting, and had a recent rezoning to an R-3 for a multiple-family. Location is along 67, south of Statesboro. Again, this agenda item, three and four, you could essentially count them as the same development. But as this process started, there was different property owners, and so that's why we have two, two applications. They could be treated, as two different parcels, they could be treated as its own track of development for, you know, timeline-wise. So the parcel is shown here. Again, this zoning map is not caught up with what has been rezoned, but just the smaller, or the larger portion of what's highlighted in blue. And this is the new site plan that was provided by the applicant, I believe at the request of this board in our last meeting, which wanted, I believe, you all wanted to see something, you know, combined and put together of where exactly they were proposing to have the access. And not to get into the details, which I think the applicant should go through with the board, but with this, with this site plan, staff has, you know, considered along and asked questions about access to Elmer Phillips closer to, I guess, the southern portion of the, of the property. But again, staff feels that we recommend approval for access on the Carrington Drive for the property, and then in the larger portion, have a right-in, right-out access along the southern portion. The county engineer is not here tonight. He had another meeting to attend. But again, I would just say that staff recommends, as shown in the, in the staff report. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Steve Rushing, who is agent.
Thank you, James. Good summary, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Back one more time this year. Tonight, I am representing the applicant, R&amp;R 529 LLC, and that is owned by Jason Williams. He had purchased this site from Fay Sanders Martin Estate earlier this year. As James indicated, it was rezoned in the, I think, the November meeting. But how we got here is in the pre-app meeting, which started this whole process months ago, we had tendered our original plan, which had two accesses to Carrington South Drive, because we had 52 units planned. And over 52 units, you have to have two accesses, as we've talked about. And so that's why we had those two. And quite frankly, it was overlooked in that meeting by everyone involved in the meeting regarding this fairly new code section, 1438(c) in the regs, that said on a multi-family site, you must access onto an arterial road or collector road. And Carrington South Drive does not meet that characteristic. And so we redesigned it. We've dropped the number of units to 40, 40 to 44 units, below the 50, so we'd only have one access. And we made that to Highway 67 in order to meet that new code section, that regulation. But in this case, the arterial road is not a county road. It's a Georgia State jurisdiction road. And so in addition to all this, we also are required to go to GDOT and, and get their approval. And we did that and talked to their engineers, and they indicated that they preferred that we not have those new accesses in addition to the existing accesses. And it was, and I think they gave you, or gave us an email, and I think we shared that with you last month. I'll read it real quickly. It's short. "It would be the department's preference for the two townhouse developments. Access be from Carrington South Drive. This allows for reduced conflict points from three additional driveways along SR 67. This may add delay to the Carrington South, but will provide for safer ingress and egress for the two developments." Now, he addressed both of them together. I think right now, we're talking about the one on the right, the Martin tract. And so that's why we sought the variance to, by varying and not applying that regulation to this site, then we could have our, our one access back to Carrington South Drive and have less than, than the 50 units. And that's what we're proposing tonight. I remembered that my law partner is actually a commissioner on the GDOT commission. And so I approached him with this and thought, asked him his opinion on it. And he said, actually, he is not an engineer, and in far as he knew, none of the commissioners on the GDOT are engineers, but they hire a bunch of them. And he said, he actually knew of the district engineer for this district, and it was the same guy on the email. So he, he reached out to him and kind of asked him to kind of explain their position that they had sent. And he said they have the same position, but he did kind of explain why they're taking that position. He says, "As for the number of driveways that we would allow, we would like the least amount that we can get. Each drive is a location for accidents to happen, and if we can, we try to limit the drives a development can have." He indicated further, "A car traveling down 67 will have to maneuver every intersection for cars attempting to enter or exit the side street driveway. In most cases, the main line has significantly more traffic than the development using the side street or driveway, which equates to higher chances of impacts. Using Carrington Drive as a primary access will increase delays for those exiting onto 67, but it is the preferred option for us and reduces the amount of conflict points that could lead to accidents." I remind you, for a variance request, that there's three standards, and the first two, I'll just, I know you're familiar with them, but I'll read them real quick. "Will the variance cause substantial detriment to the public good?" And the second one is "The spirit of this appendix observed and the public safety and welfare secured." And basically, that is where the GDOT is coming from. It is, they're looking at the general public's safety. Now, that will include the current and future residents there of Carrington South. It includes the future residents of Jason's development, and, but it also includes those persons traveling up and down 67. And as he indicated, that's probably more traffic than the ones that would be coming out onto 67. So it is public safety that supports our request for a variance, as stated in those standards. So those first two standards are met, and the fact that it is due to the public safety that we, this variance should be granted. And then the third standard was, was this situation caused by the applicant? And we assert that it was not. We would, we had the both accesses onto Carrington South, but it is basically the application of the relatively new ordinance to this particular site on a state route that's, you know, heavily traveled. And so all three standards support our variance request. The county engineer, the state engineer, our engineers all believe that this, that you see on the screen, is the safest and best method, and so we would ask that you grant our variance.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Steve. We have three people signed up opposed, so start with Lawton Sack. We'll give the three of y'all 10 minutes, so kind of monitor your time.
James, I'll ask again about the applicant or the agent donating to any of the commissioners. And again, it's been, this has been shared at the county commissioner meeting and several planning and zoning meetings, and it was being sold as these access points were going to be on 67. There were dozens of nearby residents from subdivisions by there that they came and spoke, and there were assurances given that 67 was going to be the way. There were concerns about Carrington South, about Elmer Phillips Road at the top. And I think those citizens need, their voices need to be echoed again here tonight. I know there's only a couple more that came out on this. But they, they were under an oppression that there was preapproval given for, for exit and entering off of 67 for these, or otherwise, I think they would have been back here, here tonight to speak.
Okay. Andrew Bunch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board, for hearing me tonight. My name is Andy Bunch. At our last meeting, we asked that they present to us that whether or not GDOT said yes or no. Because to me, this whole thing is putting the cart before the horse. Here we are trying to give them a variance, and yet instead, GDOT has not said, "Yeah, we're going to give you access for this, or we're not going to give..." They are recommending. They are not giving a yes or no. And that was one of the things that we brought up at the last meeting. They're proposing in their drawings to have the traffic come out on the Carrington Drive and not onto Highway 67. Now, they're asking for a variance to allow them to exit onto Carrington Drive, because they're, in their own words in their variance application letter, it states, "This variance allows for ingress and egress onto Carrington Drive rather than Highway 67. It is not expected that GDOT will grant the number one or one access onto Highway 67. Such drives will interfere with Carrington Drive traffic." That's their own words. Okay? They are correct. It will interfere with the traffic on Carrington Drive. By adding this, along with the next item that you're going to be hearing, number four, when you see both of them together, they will be increasing their traffic on Carrington Drive by three times what's already there. On a 700-foot road, three times the amount of traffic is going to be unreasonable, no matter what anybody says. We're going to go as it is now. They say we're doing 613 trips a day. They're fixing to take it to 2,379 trips a day on that small road. I did see a copy of their traffic study that they finally said they did, and it's just a basic traffic study. It's nothing concrete. They didn't do any numbers. They just put what is recommended. That's all they did. So to me, that's not a traffic study. A traffic study is putting up the things and watching the traffic go back and forth and checking all the numbers to see what's there. That's a true traffic study. And then seeing, too, what the increase is going to be. Mr. Williams applied for this variance on October 7th, the same night as we came before y'all to try to keep from doing the R-3 zoning. So he knew things were going to change already before the R-3 zoning was even approved. The R-3 zoning got approved in November by the county commissioners. So he was doing this way ahead of everything before. And the pictures that he presented to the county commissioners, as this other gentleman said, showed everything going out on the 67, and that's what the county commissioners approved. They didn't approve anything coming out on the Carrington South. Please consider this. If you give them approval, there will be two roads from the new developments adjacent to each other on Carrington Drive. If this variance is approved... If this variance is approved, if you allow it, the two proposed parcels to exit on the Carrington Drive for the new development, this will make it nearly impossible for anyone to exit or enter during peak hours. We ask this board to deny or defer this approval until GDOT gives us our final answer. And I'd like to ask, please, anybody present from here that doesn't, is a grant system, please stand. Thank you.
Well, all this said, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it, and we implore you to either deny it or defer it until we get that final answer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bunch, could I ask you a quick question?
Sure can.
And you can, anybody that lives there could give, could say it if you haven't got it. And you're, you've lived there for a while, Carrington South. What, on average, when you go to leave for work or wherever you go in the daytime, how many cars do you generally wait in line with at the end of Carrington South to get out on sixty-seven?
I myself do not wait because I'm retired, but I'm home. I'm outside every morning around six-thirty, and I see traffic backing up on that road. There's probably eight to ten cars on that road starting at six a.m., going all the way through eight o'clock. I know, I just, by looking at what the county recommends, seven-point-three trips per day per household is what they say, I said, "That's ridiculous. That didn't sound right to me." And then I got to thinking, I'm like, "Okay, you got two people, two people in a household working, just like my wife. She leaves every morning, she goes to work, she comes home for lunch, she goes back to work, she comes back again." That's four trips right there by one person in a household. So, if it is seven-point-three, we're really looking at eight trips per day, if you really do the true figures. And I got to thinking about all the ones in our neighborhood, and it's exactly the same thing. Everybody's making, most of them, some of them work far away, some of them live right close in town, and they come home for lunch, they go back and forth. So, the traffic stays congested there from about six a.m. till probably eight, eight-thirty in the morning. And in the evenings, from four-thirty until six, it's one car right after another coming into the neighborhood.
I would assume that the coming in probably wouldn't be the issue as much as to go and out.
It's not as bad. You, I have sat there as much as three minutes in the morning when I did try to go out, trying to get out onto sixty-seven. Then, once you get out, you have to sit in the center turn lane and wait for traffic because they come around the curve at sixty-five, seventy miles an hour. They're not doing the speed limit at all. Speed limit doesn't change to forty-five until you get in front of the fairgrounds. They do not slow down. They come through there just as fast as they can go. And luckily, we haven't had any major accidents there, but there have been accidents there. If you go back up to Josh Deal Road right above us there, there's been multiple accidents since they put in all those homes up there with them. That's a major road over there. So, it is there, and it's going to be so congested, it's not going to be feasible.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Emory Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. Mr. Rushing makes a good argument, he does, but we are, we are looking at a major impact on our lives. When you look at the larger portion, I know we're dealing with the smaller parcel now, but when you look at the larger one, one hundred and ninety units, let's look at the access, the proposed access. If you're going to Savannah, not much of a problem. Right turn only on sixty-seven, go. But if you're going to Statesboro, and as Mr. Bunch related, it is a challenge at peak hours to get out onto sixty-seven. They're running at highway speeds. And we're looking at, I would figure, a large portion of that one hundred and ninety units, those people are going to be going to Statesboro. So, I'm going to Savannah. We're looking at alternatives. What's an alternative? Well, we have a new traffic circle on Harville that Elmer Phillips pretty much almost intersects. That's going to be used. Elmer Phillips is going to be used when traffic backs up at peak hours on Carrington. It's going to be used so that the county commission can start budgeting money to pay for Elmer Phillips. I know it's been talked about for about twenty years, but it's going to have to happen if this goes in and other developments between Elmer Phillips and sixty-seven are built out. Elmer Phillips is going to have to be paid. Taxpayers are going to take care of that. Josh Deal, Mr. Bunch mentioned Josh Deal. I did request and receive accident report, accident data for Josh Deal. In the last five years, there've been thirty-five accidents there with thirty-two injuries. And at Carrington, it was less than that. I think it's maybe five accidents with one injury. An alternative here is also, another alternative is coming out, Elmer Phillips to sixty-seven. Now, I've looked at that intersection, and I looked at Josh Deal, and they're similar. If you're coming out of Josh Deal, to your right is a hill, and traffic's descending a hill onto where you're trying to get out. At Elmer Phillips, there's a curve, and it's, it's deceiving how fast those vehicles are moving in that curve. And it's very challenging. In addition, at Elmer Phillips, intersection with sixty-seven, when you're on Elmer Phillips, sixty-seven is banked. So, any oncoming traffic coming, coming your way on the county maintained road just pops up all of a sudden. When you, you can start making a turn, and that car's just going to pop up. This happened to me several times. I go down that way to see my grandbabies. The, there's something new in this. There's always something new, but there's something new here. Improvements to Carrington South Drive left slash right turn lanes. I understand the right turn lanes. You pave an apron off to the right, that's fine, but how do you do a left turn lane on Carrington? You're going to have to widen Carrington. That's going to be a pretty large expense to widen Carrington to put left and right turn lanes there. I assume it's going to have to be some kind of suicide lane. So, maybe that should be mentioned in conditions, that, a little more detail on the left turn lanes for Carrington Drive. Additionally, when this widening or these left turn lanes or right turn lanes are installed, how much impact is that going to have on the eighty-four homes in Carrington Drive getting in and out trying to go to work every day? We're going to have to deal with all that construction, traffic, closures. Please consider that when you, when you vote on this, on this, on this item. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. CJ Chance has signed up to speak for.
CJ Chance, I'm with Hussey Gay Bell. I'm also here with Mr. Rushing on behalf of the applicant. There's a couple of things that I want to touch on just to respond to some of the questions, some of the comments. I want to make sure that everybody understands that Carrington Drive, that the Carrington South residents will have right-of-way on Carrington Drive. There will be a stop condition on both sides of Carrington Drive. So, if there's a car coming from Carrington South or coming from sixty-seven, the cars coming out of the development have to have a stop condition. There will be no stop sign for the Carrington South traffic. Traffic study versus trip generations. So, there was a question concerning the traffic study in that it wasn't a study, it was just some numbers that there weren't tubes put down. It's very common when you're at this stage to do a trip generation study. You can get numbers off of the GOS website for what the traffic is on Highway sixty-seven. You can attribute trip counts to the residential areas, to rooftops, and in fact, we have seven-point-three trips for this type of development. But if you look in an industry standard accepted nationally, single-family detached residential actually contributes nine trips. So, that's the Carrington South generates nine trips, but this generates seven-point-three. It's the nature of who, what type of people live there. A lot of them, maybe they travel to Savannah, they don't come home for lunch and then leave again, that kind of stuff. Coming in should be no issue at any time, and I think that Mr. Brandon kind of alluded to that, that there's, there should be no slowdown at any time. Elmer Phillips, I just want to address that. I know it actually affects the larger track even more. However, the county does not even have a right-of-way on portions of Elmer Phillips Road. Elmer Phillips Road is a prescribed, it's a prescriptive easement, which means that road's been in existence for X number of years, people have been using it, it's kind of understood that it's a road. But private entities actually own that portion of Elmer Phillips Road. It's not a county right-of-way. So, it's not like you can say, "Okay, county, we'll just go in and widen the road." The county doesn't even own it at this point. So, when and if the county does widen that road, they're going to have to acquire some additional land. Public interest should be in the public interest of everyone involved, not just, you know, certain individuals. Left turn lanes will be designed, if needed, in accordance with GDOT standards. One last thing, and then Mr. Rushing needs to address a couple of things. There have been three different times we have gone out in the mornings between the hours of seven, seven a.m. and eight-thirty a.m. And there are multiple pictures with people from the county where there is no traffic on Elmer, on Carrington South Drive. I know those people leave. I know they go to work, but we're not stacking up. I lived there for two years. I did. I don't ever remember having an issue getting out then. So, but that, Mr. Rushing, oh, gosh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. He's a past caller.
Yeah, I can talk. The engineers certainly acknowledge everything that the Carrington South residents say. They knew that, they know that. But again, as they indicated, if you add three more of those intersections to sixty-seven, you're going to have that much more opportunity for accidents, and that's why they limited to just the one. Thank you.
You want to come back?
Yes.
Yeah.
I understand what, oh, I'm sorry about names I'm terrible.
CJ.
CJ said, I shouldn't know that, that's my wife's name. I understand what he's saying about county and having to buy property and all that. I actually have a petition right now that I'm working on to get Elmer Phillips paved, and I just had to get the county's approval. If you look at the intersection of where Carrington South comes in, right at the top-left corner of the large property, we just put two columns up right there, and I had to get the county's approval because, yes, they do on the right-of-way there. It was deeded to them, also in our neighborhood. It goes into our yards. Yes, it's our property, but it's not our property. The county owns it, and that's the way it is all the way down Elmer Phillips. I've been working with the county engineers and the tax assessor, and I know that that is the way it is. So, that's a mute subject in that point. I'm sorry, I just want to let you know.
No, that's fine. Thank you, sir. Okay. Entertaining questions from this board.
James, who's paying for the turn lanes?
Developers have to pay for those improvements, but there was a condition in the rezone, I believe, where they...
So, Mr. Williams will be paying for the turn lanes, not taxpayers?
Correct.
All right. All right, I have a question. What's the improvement to Carrington South Drive left-right turn lane? So, how is, how are you going to do that, CJ?
Well, the first thing you have to do, so what we've done so far is a trip generation, and the trip generation is just based on doors, you know, and how many trips it generates. So, then, once you get into design, once you know what your design parameters are, then you do a traffic study. That traffic study will tell you how much storage, how much stacking you need, how long your bays have to be. The way it works is, you know, the right turn, right, you just widen the road X number of feet, you put a taper on it, and you go. The way the left turn lane works is basically you widen a little bit on each side, you kind of taper out, then you go straight, then you taper back in. So, what you do is you generate, if you want to call it a suicide lane or double, double turn lane, or whatever you want to call it, center turn lane, whatever you want to call it, you do create that for a certain section of it, but the part that's not actually used as a left turn lane is just crossed off. And so, you widen the road to fit that inside of it.
All right, so devil's advocate. What if you're stacking up more cars than the, of course, it would be coming out, than where you've placed the entrance on the bigger parcel?
You know, I don't, I don't know how many homes are in Carrington South.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four. Okay, so eighty-four times nine is seven-hundred-and-twenty, seven-hundred-and-twenty plus thirty-six, seven-hundred-and-fifty-six trips a day generated by Carrington South. Now, I heard somebody say that it was about six-hundred-something trips a day on Carrington South. And, you know, all in all, that's not that far off. Six-hundred-something trips and seven-hundred-and-fifty-six trips, that kind of matches your door count, your rooftop counts on what's coming out of there. So, if you take, what, I lost count of my number, seven-hundred-and-fifty-six trips. So, if you take seven-hundred-and-fifty-six trips, half of those are coming in and half of them are going out, right? So, let's say that that's now three-hundred-and-seventy-five trips going in, three-hundred-and-seventy-five trips going out. There are one-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty minutes in a day. Now, we know that, you know, most of the time between ten p.m. and five a.m., there's not that many people going, so it's really about twelve hours a day, which is seven-hundred minutes. That means that on average, there's one car for every two minutes. That's on average. We also know that that average gets increased in the early morning hours around lunch and the late afternoon, late afternoon, early evening. We recognize that. But late afternoon is usually coming in, is usually coming in. So, you do a split generation on what's coming in, what's going out, and you find that you generally have a couple of minutes between cars on average. If you cut that in half, you have a minute between cars. I don't know how many seconds you need to turn. I know you need more than five, but you don't need sixty. So, there are times that you are going to have to wait. It does not matter what you do at any intersection, anywhere, there are times you are going to have to wait. But what is, what is the expected reasonable wait time to make that left-hand turn? That's what's up for interpretation, and does that outweigh the risk of putting additional intersections on Highway sixty-seven for the greater good? So, and that's, that's how you get to where, how long the, and what happens if you stack up or you don't have enough, so.
But the improvements are not, not going to be done till you do a traffic study.
That's correct. And they will not be paid for by the county. So, if development is what causes the improvement to happen, then development pays for it. Now, if there, there are times, and County Attorney James, don't let me overspeak, but there are times when the county's already got a project going on where the developer and the county work together. This is not one. Carrington Drive is already there, right? So, if it, if it requires it, then it's incumbent on the developer to put it in if it's required by the study. That'll all be reviewed by county engineer.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have, I have one, but it's for James. Well, never mind. The picture being all together, we're talking about the little one, so.
Is there a streetlight district going on this Carrington South? I know that there was an issue in the past with Carrington South is paying, their HOA is paying for whatever power bill. Is Mr. Williams putting in a streetlight district here on Carrington South? Can we make that a condition?
Well, that would have been taken up at the rezoning, but county streetlight districts, if you're going to have streetlight districts, you're going to have to go with the county as the administrator for it. So, off the top of my head, I'm pretty sure it's required, almost positive it's required in multiple family, so.
Mr. Williams, can you answer that? Is that something you've planned on, or is that something you'd be okay with? These are questions.
You have to have a certain amount of lights for public safety, certain amount of foot candles that you have to have, but a streetlight district is typically for public roads, whereas if this is private land track, then it's, it's not a district.
I'm mostly talking about Carrington South, not, not the two individual tracks.
Oh, so, but...
I think at the last meeting, you agreed to pay for the lights.
Just streetlights on Carrington Drive? Yeah, okay.
I think they said there were a couple lights.
There's three.
We did say that we would assume the responsibility for those.
I just want to make sure we're on the same page about this.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Originally, there was only one light at sixty-seven in Carrington Drive, and several years back, we paid to have two additional lights, but because Carrington Drive was completely black, and Mr. Williams did agree that he would take over those items from us when he did that.
Yeah, all right. Any other questions from this board? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Lane. Do I have a second?
Of course.
Second by Mr. Brandon. Any questions or any other comments before we vote? Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move to item four. Okay, we'll move to item four. R and R 529 LLC has applied for variance to Appendix C, Article 14 supplemental standards for specific uses. Section 1438(c) access shall only be from an arterial or collector road the property is located at or near 16287 Highway 67 North. Steve Russian will be acting as the agent. Mr. Poe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not, you know, not to go over all the locations since the previous agenda item is right next to it. As shown on the site map, this is the larger portion from Carrington Drive and then south. So this is, again, the larger piece of this site plan. With that, staff recommends, recommends approval for an entry-exit point on Carrington Drive and then one on, or from 67 with the right-in, right-out access. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Steve Russian.
Thank you again, James. As you see, this, this particular project has more than 50 units. So it does require two accesses. Again, we originally had the two accesses on Carrington South. Then the 1438 came up and we, we put two on 67. And then that's when we conversed with the GDOT engineers and what's bringing us back with the variance. But here, this is more of a compromise. GDOT does permit one of the accesses on the 67 on this larger track because there's just more linear space there to separate. They actually did tell us that where you see in this site plan, this is not a sketch plan, so it's not the detail. But where you see that right-in, right-out coming out, that's probably too close to Elmer Phillips Road. That would have to probably be a little closer in towards Carrington. But we would have just the one access to Carrington South Drive from this project. I think last month, there was some, a question about could we, rather than the right-in, right-out there, use that end of Elmer Phillips Road as our second access? We discovered in surveying this property when it was purchased back in the summer that though this property does abut Elmer Phillips Road on the, that's the west. It looks to the top, but that's on the west side. But when it gets to that curve there, right at that curve, this property ceases to abut Elmer Phillips Road. Actually, there's two other owners that own between our property and Elmer Phillips Road. I've got a plaid of it, but I could put on the screen. But there's two owners there, so we don't go up to Elmer Phillips Road. So if we attempted to put the road on our property, we would have to move it in closer from it. But then what happens is you're no longer lined up with Win Road across 67. And once again, our GDOT guys spoke up. This is the same district engineer for GDOT. We try to have drives line up with each other to reduce conflict points. Drives that are offset can lead to left-turning traffic ingress and egress from either side running into each other. So again, it's a safety factor. The state engineer, again, the county engineer and our own engineers have devised this as the most safest plan. It's a compromise. But it just has one more access to 67 in addition to Elmer Phillips and Carrington Drive that they feel traffic can manipulate with. And then everything else we've said about Carrington South would apply here. There is the two stop signs. So Carrington South residents will have the right of way once they enter onto that road. And these residents will have to come to a stop sign and, but pretty much everything that the engineer stated would also apply on this side of the road. It's the safest route. It supports the standards for variance. That's why we have a variance. Variance is in the code, just like text amendments, the zoning itself and the rezoning. It's all part of the same code. That's why we have variance. They know there's situations that arise like this that need specific attention. And where safety calls for it, a variance can be approved, as in this case. And to allow the variance being, just allow one access on to Carrington South Drive from this track. We'll try to answer any questions, too.
Okay. We have some people signed up, Lawton Sack.
I'm good.
All right. Mr. Bunch?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, for this opportunity. As I spoke in the previous presentation about the partial asking for a variance, all situations are the same, except when you look at the drawing of their proposed exit of this development to Highway 67, which will only be a right turn only. And then you have to go down and make a U-turn to come back to Highway 67. Because 90% of those people in that development are going to want to go to town. They're not all going to be going to Savannah because if you're buying, you know, you're doing something for here. They're going to want to go back into town. And there is a grass median in front of that where they cannot do that. With this, you and I both know that all the traffic will come out onto Carrington Drive. So in other words, if they don't want to make a right turn and go down and make a U-turn and create an accident possibly, they're all going to go out to Carrington South. They're not going to come out on the 67. So that's going to make that traffic just get increased on Carrington Drive if they bring that drive out to there. Again, you know, I know he's given the answers of what GDOT has told them that they recommend and all this. But I think if they ask for the two entrances on to 67, that GDOT will grant it. Because there's enough room after our entrance that they can make a right-hand turn into that development. And then there's another one down below it, so they can have two right turn lanes there to do it. So I just ask that y'all consider all this and get them to give a definite firm whether GDOT is going to say yes or no, at least to this partial. I understand why you did the other. The road he proposed before was going to come right out in our turn lane. And there's no way they could have an entrance and exit in the middle of a turn lane. And I know GDOT would never approve that. I understand that about the small side. But this side, there's no reason why they should be coming out to Carrington Drive. They should be required to go out to an arterial road as per the code state. And this variance should not be given to them. I please ask that you deny this approval.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Amory Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have the same argument, arguments. I do find it interesting that the point that Mr. Rushing brought up, that there are two property owners that own property between 529 LLC and Elmer Phillips around the curve, because that is not what the online county Q public map shows. As a matter of fact, if you go to this parcel right now on Q public, there's no information available. I know it's in the process of change. I don't know why it can't be changed once and be done and correct. But without going to the courthouse and researching and the paper documents, no one would know that there's another, two owners of property along Elmer Phillips between, between this. I'd like that whatever you can do to urge the county to get the records updated online. That's where the public's going to access them. I've experienced a lot of problems with those records, a lot of, a lot of problems. But I urge you to, to urge the county to make it a little better for public information.
Okay, thank you, sir. CJ?
Yes, sir, just a couple of responses to Mr. Lane on the Q public. He is correct. It does not show that that is owned by different entities. The tree farm is what I call it, the Quanambaum Farm right across Elmer Phillips Road there. It actually, the property line comes to the center and then there's a strip on, in between the center of the road and this track that we're looking at that is a very, very thin strip. And that's actually owned by another party. So that's why we were saying that there are two different parties that would have to have right of way acquired from. But to Mr. Lane's point, he is correct. So in reference to the right-in, right-out, I don't know how to say this other than the fact that if I was coming from Statesboro and I was going into that development, over 75% of those, I would use the right-in, right-out. And the reason being, I can always make a quicker turn going right. So if I turn right down Carrington Drive, I'm going to at some point have to take a left. And if I have to wait on somebody to take a left, then I get into the issue of, am I stacking up to turn in to get into the driveway? So for all those, I would say for half of them along the front road, half of them along the back road, anything that I can get to by making right turns, that's what I'm going to do. I mean, I'll drive all the way around town going, making right turns instead of left turns. The right-in, right-out also, if you're going to town, I totally agree with, I think his name is Mr. Bunch. It is not a suitable idea to use the right-out, go down and make a U-turn, which is also another reason why there needs to be a safe way to make a left turn out of this development instead of making a U-turn at Elmer Phillips Road. Because that is not a good place to be trying to make a U-turn at. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Entertained any questions from the board? Any discussion? Yes, sir.
I understand what CJ is talking about, about making a right-hand turn. I understand that, yes, I'd rather make a right-hand turn across traffic any day. But if you allow them to come out on the there, everybody coming out on the Carrington Drive is going to be making a left-hand turn across Highway 67. And that traffic is tremendous. It is wall-to-wall, both lanes coming around that curve. Again, as I said, they're not doing 55 miles an hour, they're doing 60, trying to get into town. And when they're coming out of town on the other side, the minute they get past the firegrounds, they're already doing 55 to 60. So we're facing 60 mile an hour traffic going both ways that we have to track, cross and turn into. So, yeah, it'd be great to have a right-hand turn only, but it's not going to happen. So that part is just kind of a mute subject. I understand. When they come down, yes, they're going to turn right into subdivision or they're going to turn right into Carrington Drive and then make a left and back up traffic if this backed up for any reason. So that's the only point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Okay. What happens if, if the, GDOT doesn't give you approval for that entrance?
If GDOT would not give us approval for that entrance, there would be some sort of hardship placed on the property. We would petition GDOT to relieve that. The reason being is this property is not deed restricted by GDOT, meaning that there's not a limited access along this portion of Highway 67. And they cannot necessarily, they can limit your access to a piece of property if you have an alternative access. However, if we bring up to them that this was actually accessed by Carrington Drive by a variance and that it, you know, we had to go through a process to get it, we can prove to them six ways to Sunday that we meet all the spacing requirements to get the right-in, right-out. I am very confident. I'm confident to the point that they can tell me verbally, yes, you can get it. They're not going to give me a permit until I apply for it, which I'm not going to apply for it until I know what I'm doing. So to answer your question, I would claim hardship to GDOT and that I have to have an alternative access for safety per the county ordinance because the county won't say it as well, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions? Entertained a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Bath to approve. Second by Mr. Lane. All those in favor? That's unanimous, all right. Y'all have been approved. All right. For this board, we have a conference coming up February the 12th through the 14th in Columbus. Check your calendar and see if you can attend. It'll be Wednesday, you'll go over on Wednesday, be there Thursday and come back Friday. So mark that on your calendar. Ms. Jean Anne went to her granddaughter's graduation at Georgia today. And she was sorry she missed, but she had a higher calling. Want to miss, wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Starting in January, we'll meet on Tuesday. So that'll be, second Tuesday.
No, it's third Tuesday.
Third.
Yes.
Third.
Five thirty.
Okay. Third Tuesday at 5:30.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, entertain a motion to dismiss. Motion to adjourn. Second by Mr. Brandon. All in favor? All right, thank y'all.